I'd like to call the August 8th meeting of the county board committee's order and I'd like to welcome all of you, especially Dr. Chris Craplin. Welcome. We have your public sign up sheets, does everybody have the opportunity? It's not on our agenda in the block state. I'll offer again. Any announcements? Oh.
Just out of the clip.
Trust him with the gun. Easy now. Any announcements? The mic is out. Well, I've got one, it's a quick note ahead, if you'd be okay with this, we have one of our upcoming meetings in October that will be in the town halls. I did do one, just may or not pull that together.
Schedule meeting says they have to, certainly recess a meeting from this day to, or from any regular meeting to a higher location that would be called a special. But short of changing the schedule of meetings, a regular meeting is a special one.
How do we do that in the past?
I think, I guess what we have done in the past is we have recessed a regular meeting to do it.
Remember last year, we had a meeting on election day. Did you get a close at work?
Yeah. What we could do is set this meeting up at a special time, open this meeting, and recess this meeting for a house.
You can do that, or alternatively, often times, are you thinking about a sure enough regular meeting where we call the business sector? That's going to be good.
Otherwise, you do a kind of special meeting that is, they have some business that come up that you need to attend to, maybe not on notice.
We've got a lot of folks here from Anaheim sometime, let's consider Anaheim. We've got facilities over there, we'll work on both of them. Yep. Definitely, I agree. Chairman, we might consider that when our next year meetings go.
I was going to say, if you're interested in doing it on a regular basis, what we could do is, if you get ready to gather the regular meeting schedule, make necessary changes to get those dates ahead of time. Probably by Thanksgiving, back to late, we could just say November meeting.
We'll follow rise, we'll observe from the sign, I'll ask commissioner, I feel, please.
Please join with me in favoring flag.
I plead allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the public hearings tonight, we'll move on to our public comment period. Mr. Dave Kropf.
My grading license, that's right?
Yeah.
Welcome, David.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So you signed up, you're running for college?
Um, yeah, we'll see what will happen. Counsel it, yeah, counsel it now. I don't really like talking in public, but I find myself doing it more than, more than I want to. Um, yeah, talk about grading license here. Uh, I think an objective observer would actually think of the planning board's recommendations that I think you're going to get tonight. Um, I think, an outside observer would think they're a jest, and that's specifically the $500 a day fine for somebody not having a license. Uh, think about it, I mean, if it's not a fine for violating the erosion and sedimentation ordinance, it's a fine for not having a license. Uh, what it really does, it's a fine for landowners who don't jump through the bureaucratic red tape and hoops that the grading industry seems like would want you to jump through. If environmental protection is the goal, why not switch the fine to just fine anybody that violates the ordinance? Why is not having a license fine worthy, but violating the ordinance is not fine worthy? It doesn't make much sense. I'd venture to say that the licensing program and the new proposals would have less industry support from the grading industry if you switched the fine from violation to just not have, from not having a license to actual violation of an erosion ordinance. Um, basically, what you have before you is a huge gift to the industry, squashing competition from small operators, limiting small business growth, but most importantly, the recommendations that have been passing down specifically the $500 a day fine tramples all over private property rights. This is how crony capitalism starts, when the state or a governing body starts granting special privileges to an industry, starts special licensing and things like that. Of course, the graders, they don't want you to do it themselves, because then you have to hire them. It's a big incentive for me to not go out and do my own grading, because I have to hire them or else I get fined, not for breaking an ordinance, but for not having a license, for not actually doing the paperwork to have a license. It's a huge gift to the grading industry. At what point do the definitions that are going to come before you, the licensing program, and the potential fines, when do they apply to landowners? When they're doing a French drain, whether they're doing a foundation drain to get water away from their house, when they're doing landscaping, they're breaking dirt then, when they're doing gardening, how big your garden has to be before it falls into this ordinance and a possible fine of $500 a day? This is an ill-thought-out plan by what I think is an impressionable planning board, and I think it should be flatly rejected by you guys. The license does nothing to promote the actual goal of the erosion control ordinance. If protecting the environment is the goal of the erosion ordinance, then why not put the fine toward anyone not complying with the ordinance? And you can just scrap the licensing program altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Brian Lamb.
Thanks. Well, it is fantastic being with you this evening, and before I get started, I just want to say that this is the first time in my voting career that I've ever looked at a board of commissioners and said that I was happy, and I would have voted for all of you had I had the opportunity, but unfortunately, I was only able to vote Carl. And that being said, a little bit about myself, I'm from Franklin, I was born at Independence Hospital in 1974, I've lived here my whole life, I'm raising my kids here, and this is my camp, this is a place that I love, and hope to always be until Lord calls me somewhere else. But I do believe that each and every person that I'm looking at right now is of more high character, that you're morally good people, and that you have our campus best interest at heart. However, I do disagree with you and believe at all you're very wrong with the way you supported local business the last time you had your meeting. It took less than one minute to vote to take $181,000 bid to another county. $181,000, and I will say this, I've been, I've seen these bids come and go, and this happened to be one that I happened to be in the office when this was being bid. All this was done at triple net. To give you an idea, in dealership world, triple net is absolute dead flat cost. No incentive kickback, no allocation bonus, no incentives at all. Franklin would never have made one plug knit, in fact, on the last bid, I was not even allowed to mark up a single spare key with a profit. It all had to be a dead flat cost. And so, you know, I see that, and I see the difference with $300 difference and all that, and I've seen some, maybe a little bit of false reporting, maybe they were just ignorant, didn't understand, but I've seen a little bit of that, saying, well, they have to go with the lowest bid, and I understand what counsel that I've received, but that is absolutely false. Maybe you can clear that up for me, maybe that's not the case, but I'd be kind of curious to hear what the reason would be to take money away from our county and take it to another county completely, when quite frankly, that dealership, I haven't seen them sponsoring the first high school basketball game, I haven't seen them being in our little league, I haven't seen their plan and drink like that at Franklin High School. And I'm from, I mean, granted, everybody knows where I work, but, you know, I'm on the booster club, I'm trying my best to work for our county, and it just, it's disheartening to say from least when I've seen that. And to only take, it was just barely over a minute, just barely over a minute, to even take that money away from us. And I'll tell you with what we've done, we've taken advertising money away from things that we were doing, like with mail, those ridiculous mailers that you did, and you immediately throw them into garbage, everybody remembers that. I know I throw them away constantly, but we took that money away and decided, let's do things in our community that's going to be more of a positive impact. Through all that, we've been able to give $28,000 to Franklin High School, just gave another $6,000 to Highlands High School, did another fundraiser, we gave a total of $6,000 to Macon Middle School and Mountain View Intermodal. And I'm sorry, but I've never seen this other dealership in our community. And I don't even know where Park Sherwood is, I've never even heard of it, and I've been in dealerships my whole life. And I just, I just wish that we would have a little bit more consideration for local businesses, because I think it sends the wrong message, quite frankly, when we're telling everyone to shop local, yet even our own county chooses not to do so. And, you know, I would just, I would just hope that we would consider that more thoroughly the next time that that happens to come up, because I will tell you this, we have been approached by other counties to bid this process, and Brian Hammond-Ryters refuses. They refuse it, because they believe that those counties should stay in their county that they're at. But it's honestly no money involved with it, it takes a lot of time, a lot of resources have to be involved with it, and it takes hours to do this, because you have to make sure you go through the proper bidding process to do it, to make no money. So it's not like we're looking at a profit standard, it's nothing more than pride to make sure our county is in our bids. And listen, I'm a capitalist, you know, I believe in capitalism and things of that nature. If we would have lost that bid to Smoky Mountain Cross or Countryside Sherwood, those people work just as hard as I do, and they've got families, I would have no complaints at all. But quite frankly, we didn't. And, you know, I would just, just like to ask you to please consider that.
Brian, you might just have just moved to vote on that? Sure, you might have just seemed to vote, but I assure you, there was a lot of discussion before that vote, at least three of us on this board. I immediately sent out an email asking about the, you know, what was the procedure, because he was so close to the money. We want to spend our money locally, we all agreed to that. Carl had a conversation with Carl Allen, the chairman, immediately asked that. And then we had a conversation with, that gentleman over there. He can explain to you why it took minutes to vote on, and why that we were hamstrung where we were at. So, the vote might only took a minute, but I assure you, Brian, there was a lot of discussion before that minimum vote, and these gentlemen can speak to that.
Well, we don't see all that, I mean.
Yeah, I see a nutshell, I don't have the statute in front of me, but a nutshell, under general statute 143-129, the bid must be reported to the lowest responsible bidder. And in this situation, it was, it was a small amount of money, and I will tell you that this board, county manager, all lamented that the business was going to our county. I'll tell you, but required by general statute 143-129, date the lowest responsible bid, the bid was lower than the company's.
Brian.
Go ahead.
I appreciate you coming up and bringing that to the board. There's, there's wonderful opportunities that this board has to award project, and every time that that happens, and it doesn't go in my content, it always runs on the top. And I get the best of this board, but I think I'm safe and safely out working with it, because, you know, there's local businesses, people sit here on this board, we absolutely understand what we're going to do. That is, it's, I'm not happy with it, but that's what's in the head.
There's been a lot of discussion statewide about whether or not counties can prefer locals in this situation. Right now, that's not the goal, we can't do that. I think there's a lot of sentiment, a lot of people would like to see that, and there actually are some good policy reasons to allow it, at least to some of them, but we're not there.
Are all those bids secret until, you know?
They must be sealed.
Because, you know, I was looking at the bid, and, you know, granted, I'm in dealership world, so I see all this, probably more so than anyone else, but I can't hardly even understand how a business owner would bid a bid like this, exactly $50 net loss per car. Because that's what it was, I mean, it's great for the county, but when we, I look at this, and each one of those cars will bid at $50 net loss, I'm just going, what businessperson in their right mind would bid that, to lose $300? And then I looked at it, and I said, well, the county didn't really make anything, because you're having to send six, seven county employees an hour away, and I know those county employees are not making minimum wage, so hasten, say we lost money getting the vehicles over here to our county in the first place, unless there was a leader, which I don't think that is the case, but, so, you know, I appreciate you clearing that up, but I just, I've seen it go on and over and over and over and over again, I said, look, instead of being a critic, I just want to at least air my grievances out, and then if nothing can happen, nothing can happen, and I've had several people in our community, Ted Rhodes is one of them, said, my goodness, I'd have gave the county $300 bid, it's going to keep the money in town. I thought, yeah, had we known, I'd have told Brian, hey, not $50 off, we won't lose money.
We offered that, too?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else would like to address the board? So we have trouble later, Robles. Come on up. Let me station aim, I'll write it down for you.
I'm Randy Shook, from Anaheim. And I would like to oppose this new deal they've come out with on this re-licensing of solar credits. They already have a couple things, pretty much covered anything like that. If I had more regulations, and we got to, I want to, like you, if any work room would be doing outside, I've been, I think, and I have arrived, worked on, wondered what that had, kind of, here, like a face, a little bit dry, see that, strong.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we move on to conditions to the agenda?
Good, I would like to add an item of new business, the item number of letting gifts, that will be discussion of the resolution concerning changes to the officially dangerous development.
Just prepared a amendment to accomplish the amendments to the arrangement between county and the countryside community development. Folks, I have, in each of you a copy of that, I think I got that somewhere. Sort of, it's under old business. Yes, old business, it was a matter of just accomplishing by written form what was essentially included last month. Is that the file? I don't see it. It's entitled Amendment to Agreement for High Recreational Opportunities. Was it used? So moved to transmission approved. Right. Michael Fields, call the favor.
I am.
Item number nine, night A, Franklin High School Future Business Leaders of America, welcome.
This is a part of my crew that went with me to California, and we have Ross and Bird, Crystal Watson, Trevor Rogers, they participated in the community service project, I'll let them know about that in a minute. Everyone has a t-shirt that you want with, we're going to show you in a minute, and then this is taken. That one, yes. We had about 14 kids that we took out there June 20th through July the 3rd, and we, I think we walked around, it was almost 60 miles that we walked, the distance from my phone said, and so, not only did we go there and compete, we went and explored a little bit with Southern California. So I'll let them help you to think about what we did.
Well, the community service project, most of you are probably very familiar with, that took place in Macon County, it was the colon cancer awareness concert that we hosted at Smoky Mountain Center for the Performing Arts with Mr. Wes Hayes. Mr. Hayes is a colon cancer survivor, and we did that in efforts to raise awareness for colon cancer throughout Macon County, and to encourage people within our county to be screened. So many people get this disease and don't know about it, and then it's too late to treat the disease. So that was our encouragement with this project. After planning and executing the project, and doing the numerous amount of time that we put into hosting the project, we were able to come up with a presentation that we were able to present at the regional, state, and national levels of Future Business Leaders of America. And so, we came in second place at the state conference, where we have 6,000 members throughout North Carolina, and at the national conference that we attended, Anaheim, we had 14,000 students there nationwide, and competed against between 300 and 400 different high schools with our community service project. We're very grateful, us, this team, that we here presented the project, and we came in not placing with our nation, so we're very proud of our place.
My name's Trevor Rogers, and I also competed in t-shirts design throughout our state, and I got first, which made it our national shirt. On the front, it's got Legacy of Leadership, which is our thing for the year, and I did a star for, like, LA, the Stars in the Street, since Anaheim's so close, and then on the back, it's got the little movie clip thing, and Your Future Starts Today with North Carolina's theme, and it's got the names.
We'd just like to thank you all for supporting us. This is Shannon McConnell, he is a professional division member, and he's going to be working with Trevor and Brian, and they're going to go to Western Carolina University and going to start a new chapter there, out in the land.
I don't need the microphone, because I'm pretty loud anyway. For most of you that know me, I just want to thank the board for their support for these young students. It means a lot to me. As Ms. Brooks said, I'm actually the vice president, president-elect of the board for the state of North Carolina for the professional division. So I'm very engaged in mentoring these students on high school, middle school, and on now, the, I'm very excited, Western Carolina University will be reactivating that chapter, and it's going to be going very strong. These clubs and organizations mean so much to these young people, it's definitely appreciate the support there that every one of you have given us, because these are the things that they don't learn in the classroom. You're not going to learn about the world and the top skills that you learn, and how market yourself, and go into an interview. You don't learn that in a textbook, you don't learn that in taking a test. So I just appreciate your support of these young individuals, and what we do, you know, in mentoring these young students to be the better business professionals of tomorrow. So thank you very much.
So, junior, seniors, coming, not for you?
Me and Trevor have just graduated, so we'll be freshmen at Western Carolina.
I graduated too, I'm going to William Gessup University in Rockland, California.
You're leaving, or?
Rockland, California, it's about 30 miles north of Sacramento.
It is a long way from home. Yes, I've been right behind, so, I plan on, yeah, I plan on carrying my class.
My place is amazing.
Thank you all for the support.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I enjoy doing it, it's, it's something that I've been in FBLA since I was in high school. Ms. Donald Foster pulled me in and had a vision for me of what she wanted to do with me, and because of the organization, it's the business professional that I am today. And that's why I give back, because I know how important it is for these students. So, I appreciate it very much.
The beginning of my 20th year teaching, he was there interviewing me way back in the day. And I'm actually on the North Carolina FBLA board, I don't think I've ever told you all that, but, and I'll probably be on, probably till I retire. Well, thank you all again.
Congratulations.
All right, we got one impressive group, our local unit, another individual, Taylor Hollins, welcome. She's going to be our 4H representative at the NCAA C C conference. Welcome.
Hi, thank you all for having me. I was just asked to come and tell you all a little bit about what's going to be going on while I'm there. It's a two-day, well, yes, it's two days, I leave on Friday, do my Saturday meeting. So it's two days of leadership training and civic training. So basically, they're teaching me and our young youth how some county commissioners, I think that's great. Just a little bit about 4H, there's about 100 kids and about 12 different clubs. I personally have done a sewing club, I've been a budding chef from when I was younger, and now I am the market stewardship. The thing that I'm going to do is Youth Voice, it's in Durham, North Carolina, and really, they just kind of asked me to come and talk to y'all and tell y'all what's going, and they just have a quick picture to all mine.
Do?
They're going to have a slide show with your commission leadings with all the counties, and then just.
Absolutely. Do you want us up front, or do you want us to stand back here?
Just stand back there, son.
And the 4H part of the conference is always a really big thing, I mean, they have, they keep throwing every conference, it's always, it's the one, like, my wife has gone to make a hand review of some papers. So thank you, Ken.
Here we go, Mr. Tate. Good luck.
Thank you.
See you later. All right, moving on to old business, 10A, replacement of the Public Safety Training Center, one of the Southwest County fowls, Macon County, county manager, assistant president, Tom Thomas.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, and Curtis, glad to have you all with us tonight. As you'll recall, we've been discussing the fire safety training center for some time now, in terms of the location of the building, I think that, as we looked into it, it felt like the more favorable location was the location which we were discussing now. the more favorable location was the location which we were discussing now on the west, the west of the property as opposed to the east where we were discussing previously. In those discussions, Dr. Thomas and Chester and myself have sat down and met. And we're currently at a place where we have two proposals. The first being the ten point six acres. We kind of, to start with, we took that whole parcel of property over there at ten point six acres to begin discussions. And then as we saw, actually, Dr. Thomas worked with us to show us where the building would actually be placed on this property, which would be toward the east boundary of that property on the first page that you're looking at here. So if you'll turn the page, and then go, actually turn to the back page, and you will see here where Dr. Thomas placed for us on this property, where the building would actually go. And as we continued our discussions, we felt like before moving forward with the survey, just to let you know that as opposed to ten point six acres there, that at six acres, we feel like that we can get that building on there with six acres as opposed to ten. So with that being said, we were just wanting to measure twice and cut once before we move forward with the survey. That will be the first step as we begin moving forward with this fire safety training. So we just wanted to make sure that before we kicked off there and started with the survey, which will then go on to both parties getting an appraisal of the property, we just wanted to get the board's blessing to move forward with this site selection.
Do you want to move on to the motion, Mr. Sherman?
Do you have Dr. Thomas, John, any addresses or anything?
No, so we're agreeing with that. And I think that the six acres is adequate. It didn't adjust the building placement at all. It just took off the tail end of the back ten acres.
Motion to accept. Six acre, root call. We have last year. Six acres, you have second. You heard special.
Are those setbacks purged from a burned building? In the design details of a burned building, are there any required setbacks from other structures?
The requirement from the North Carolina Allstate Fire Marshal, that we have a minimum of three acres is allowed to set back different structures. So the six should be sufficient for, once we get an architect coming in and have the school survey down, to place the building more easily.
And so all the required setbacks will be retained in this six acre portion?
Yes, sir.
If that's some good land, I wouldn't tell you that setback would be everywhere. Not that you only use for something in the future, but that's good.
The other use could be for woodland operations, chainsaw classes, deer play, wood being burning, putting that up in this round of buildings.
Where do we stand with the building?
We're still waiting to move forward so we can hire an architect.
Where do we wait now?
The process for the state would be, just what Ms. Rowan said, you have to go through the survey. You have to have two presidents, board trustees, college has to approve and accept that piece of property. And upon that acceptance, the letter goes down to the state board of trustees or community colleges. It's put at least on their agenda, they have to accept it, and then will have to do an environmental scan of property to make sure that there's anything there before the state accepts it into their inventory for the community college system. So there is, it's just the process of being able to.
Do we have that pricing?
Doing it.
We can't figure the credit that the county can get for its contribution to this project without probably getting certified with the place. That's where we are right now.
And now this is a huge step. This is a huge step.
There's a, which revealed, all due respect, it's a three dash one we're required to do for the five J scope. All the finances has to be done on that. Figured that all this has to be done before it goes to state board also. So the state construction can then say, yes, it's adequate funding, no, it's not adequate funding, and it's, I don't know, back and forth process. I think there's been a lot of positives in some of the, you know, process of delaying it from the standpoint of finding a better location than our previous location. And some cost savings there based on some of the excavation and those things. So it's just a matter of getting the wheels turning and moving forward and making it happen at this point, I think.
And then you have to come back to this board for matching, matching funds, or is that already?
Actually, this property is going to serve as a good portion. And that's the reason you've got the value to serve it to bring upon value from that credit. It's agreed through by both community college system.
But the value of the letting can offset matching completely there. You can if it's a number.
You can if you have the financial resources to build the designated facility as established. So if you establish a number, you can use property, the matching funds for county's proportion. But if there's not enough resources on the other side, say bond money that was set aside, then that's the conversation we'd be coming back, either the county manager and county commissioner saying, in order to build X, we have eight amount of bond money. Land is valued at whatever, but we still need B resources to be able to build the property.
That's a twenty-five percent match initially.
Correct.
But the land could be counted as a hundred percent of our twenty-five percent.
That is correct. If we had enough financial resources of bond money to build the projected project. You can scope it up, you can scope it down.
As an aside, if the property ends up being more of the match necessary or as much as match necessary, they need money to do it. We could actually put that credit in the bank, if you will, with community college group and utilize it in the future.
That is true. That's correct. So anytime there's state money that would be available, you can use state money. What the match does is allow you to use bond money or state money prior to using county money. And if the project has enough bond money, then you can use all bond money to offset the match. Clear as mud?
Clear as mud. You know, my feeling is open this neck for North Carolina.
The only thing you're needing to act on tonight is, well, we have the survey of the six acres.
And the appraisal.
And the appraisal.
Now, if the appraisal comes in under, we may need to revisit this, would be taking a couple more acres. That would be the benefit of the whole ten acres or eight acres. If we can get a hundred percent water for land value at six acres doesn't cover a hundred forty-five percent match?
Well, I think at the end of the day, just like we were talking about before, the bond money is about one point four million dollars. That's all the bond money that has been set aside for this project. So at the end of the day, that's all of the money that's going to be coming in is that one point four million. And I think the range that we discussed at that meeting previously, the range of those buildings were from two point one to one point eight, somewhere around in there. So that's where, in the one point eight or thereabouts, was value engineering, which we had requested kind of a, tell us what you can do this for bottom line. And that was that one point eight number. So at the end of the day, I think just from, based on what we're hearing, it's going to be property plus.
And that plus, that's not a consideration that the board would consider early, and somebody will know the house.
Just three and two dollars, I mean, you hate for a building to fall.
They're certainly going to be, they're certainly going to be short on, uh, real bill, what you're going to pay. I think we'll make sure we put a paying place for that survey to price. If you can bring that up. That motion, it's got nothing covered now. We'll move on this. We beat it out of the day. Hope it lasts here.
Oh, they're the six acres. You probably say night.
Uh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the appraisal.
Yeah.
Let's do a second place.
Does anybody get that?
Yeah. Go do it.
Thanks, guys.
Item ten B, under old business, presentation of proposed changes to grading license ordinance. Planning and planning director, Mr. Jack Morton. Mr. Jack, how are you?
Good, thank you.
So we, there's presently a grading license intact right now in Macon County. Macon County planning ordinance is just written here.
That was presented back in February, it's become from March by the police mission. It's a task to the planning board.
So it was presented until they reviewed it as what we did?
Yes, exactly right. And that was sent to the planning board. I think Mr. Lester presented that as the liaison comments in May. Get pretty busy on this. So the planning board did this there. They met in May and discussed it somewhat in June. They invited grading contractors to come and tell us what they thought. And the license, July, they developed, bullet point list, the bottom of the home document, presenting. This, I didn't have to tell you, is what, that, my, is what, and that's why, as the director of planning department, I'm presenting it to you for your consideration. The planning board, I think, discussed this pretty handily. I don't think they have anything else to add or make weight to this. But I'll present it to you and tell me what you have to add.
This is presented as a draft to you for consideration, not in actual deceit. If you look at it, study it, understand that what's been handed out to you is one small section of chapter one fifty-three of the Macon County Code Of Ordinance, which deals with soil erosion and sedimentation in the ground. This would be a new section within that ordinance, is what this would effectively do.
The planning board did not undertake, as they would advise, to consider any other elements to be noted, but I say, unfortunately, it is.
So in fact, I think, response to this question earlier, there was a question about the grading on your own property.
This addresses that, and there are some exemptions that most people are not aware of, that exempts certain activities, certain regarding, things like that, that are, I would like to just complete this. I would advise anyone that has concerns to review that ordinance. It's on our website, online, or I can get our department to guide them also.
In fact, it might not be a bad idea to provide each of these commissioners with a copy of the soil erosion settlement code ordinance. They will not be able to read this and understand that you have that ordinance, simply because it's a definition section, and some of the terms and words here are defined in that ordinance. And there is, as Jack indicated, a section that deals with exceptions of land disturbing activities that would not be regulated under any circumstances.
Nothing changed about the amount, the initial amount of land. Just about that.
What is that about? Question on the day?
There's not a professional amount, it's not that much of a, and it's not, and it's not an exception.
But that language you were talking?
Yes.
The half acre language?
That was changed with a long time ago.
Yeah, that's, but that's making change.
Yes, this, we're going to ask to consider that. Just a little, a little history, I want to point you over to ask. Yes. There's, how many licenses, license totals are important, saying that I made, was a hundred and, I'm a hundred and fifty. And the letter was sent out to all hundred and fifty of the document, they come to the point you were made. I think, as with all of those situations, you don't get a hundred and fifty later. But I mentioned conversations at their place, and they, I think, along that, that night in February, and the planning board heard it outside. And I think they just do show you the reflection of what they heard about from licensed contractors, as well as the common or non-licensed contractors. I think this is what this is for.
As an educator, when it comes to license, I mean, how people, that gives people assistance with language we talk about, giving them the ability, their learning disabilities.
The test we've had in the past, it wasn't a kind of test, it was not a good test. And if you made, needed better way to, we do that. We have a Spanish translator in the building that we use sometimes about this. We never ask to use her for that.
I heard you say, have issues with the camera, and things like that. Sometimes that can be an obstacle to understanding something in a question or something like that.
No question.
I want to make sure that everybody at least had opportunities, even if they're not clear with that language.
Yeah, I was not envisioning all the time to suit this. In fact, probably not yet next meeting. I don't think it might give the planning board some idea of which direction the board might be heading that connection in, from the changes that you desire and looking through good. But the reality of this is what the ordinance is, that I think is going to require a public hearing in order to adopt. And we will obviously need some corrections, the board, as to whether or not it's interested in submitting, whether it needs some additional work, because it will be an appetite for the firing of, of that public hearing.
Gentlemen, sounds like we have a couple more concerns. So, thanks, gentlemen. Thanks, Jeff.
Should they mail the, the justice?
I'll be direct. Ten C, enroll business, public safety community association, bring it.
At your last meeting, Mr. Dill brought Goodman to the board and indicated that the public sage, uh, Community Association, Inc., doing some work on the older saving church, make that a community center, it saves some money in the process. And that shell they came in wanted to be able to use those savings to do further work on building in form of, leaving repairs to all and painting, if that's present. And I intend that you, you need needed a written amendment to the existing agreement. That is that amendment that is needed to accomplish that.
Did anybody need change to read, or, Mr. Sherman, you don't think change to read, or?
No, it's just like, thirty seconds, come on, my stuff. Have you?
No warning is taken, right?
And that's changed since.
Well, I make the motion, we approve the amendment to the agreement, we're going to make a pitch on whether we need to approve.
Call of favor?
I have.
People on the new business, I'm sure we'll require revised fire district map, Cali Fire Rescue, Fire Services, Board, take what we want.
Chairman.
Uh, favor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, tonight, I'm actually here asking for approval of some changes to Cali Fire Rescue Insurance District, owner and binding board. Fire Department has a response area, which is the area that obviously that they respond to an actual cause event. And then within that response area, it's actually divided up into. up into various layers of insurance districts, particularly a five mile insurance district, six mile insurance district, and anything over six miles, which is considered class 10 or effective. If you have a fire department such as Cali that has a lower protection class rating, and they have a class seven, anything that's within that five mile district receives the benefit of that lower protection class rating. Cali Fire Rescue actually constructed a new substation on Mason Branch Road. We've went to inspect them, look at their, the equipment and the manpower they have there, and they have met their requirements to be considered as a substation. What happens is, we adjust the map, make the reflections or notes on the map, the structures that are included within the five mile district now, that's within that substation range. And then that, once you all approve that map and get forwarded on to the North Carolina Office State Fire Marshal, they will schedule an inspection and actually come up and officially certify the substation. So this is the first step from Macon County to get the substation recognized by the state of North Carolina to have them inspected. And just for reference, that inclusion does not change the response area, doesn't change any of the outside area that they respond to, but it did include 74 parcels that were in a lower protection class rating, which included 39 structures. So those folks will actually do the benefit of lower reinsurance treatment, in time they get their proper insurance, once the substation's recognized, not by a court. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval of the map. I do have a big one at the back, if you want to look at the big one back there.
I can see it.
The bicycle covers the area of Mason Branch Road up to their owner of the district.
Yes, they overlap the burden town part?
Everything, it's the benefit of the lower protection class stops at their response area. So it does not overlap you with another fire district.
And that's less than five miles?
Yes. And you would actually have to change what you consider the service district, which is the area that they respond to and work for that.
So you're just going to certify the new substation, the burden town, are you doing burden town that can jump and fit in there?
No, we actually, we actually went to burden town, and there, we were not able to verify that they had the adequate number of manpower on our officers. What happens is, for a main station, you have to have 20 people that have a main station recognized. And currently, for every substation that you have to have eight additional personnel on the office. We had some issues, we couldn't verify the personnel, and we were actually scheduled to go back to them in September, first week of September, to get a community of September main for burden town.
And you want us to know regardless of the three days required?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. The motion to approve the expanded map, okay, I think we get to do it. Motion approved. Second, motion to all the favor.
I wanted to just let you know we did the certification DOT today, but it will be installed in warning lights, it's very close, so, doesn't give.
All right, we can move on to the agreement for recreational opportunities to stay in that sort of.
Yes, this is a manual agreement for a burden town year, and it's called Society Rates to確立的， [inaudible].
Approve of three. Second, call of favor. Landstate renovation from the Robinson Department, Community Board.
Yes. Great. In our last meeting, we opened up two bids for landscape plans for the Robinson Department to build. When we opened them up, we really weren't comparing apples to apples. We had two different companies, landscape companies, provide us two different plans for what they thought was going to be good. They both had different prices, they both had different, completely different designs of what the landscape should look like there. So I raised my hand and put up a little objection to that, because in reality, we really weren't comparing apples to apples when it came to designs or to prices. So I made the suggestion that we get one of our local landscape architects, give us a price, and we do a set of plans, landscape plans, and then we'll put it out, and whenever we do receive prices, we will be comparing apples to apples. So we asked Hank Ross from the Hollis Community to do that, provided based on package.
Yes, it was, it is in your package, and the quote we got was $2,000.
Two hundred and eighty dollars. I think that was the grid plans we had. We had an additional if we want him to administer the bids. Do you ever see that spread?
Yes.
If we want him to, we're drawing.
You can do that either way, it's basically, it's under the, it's under all the bidding threshold, so just authorize us to move on.
This one is in the budget, I take it? Yes.
Yes, we'll take that in the project.
Broken Hank Ross is very interested in what he's doing, and he's put everything out for now, but with that, we come around making a motion that we approve the $2,280 at this time, and $840, I think we would, if that's the, if that's the case, we'll see if you can handle that. Then I make a motion, we approve Ross, our landscape architect, for $2,280 to cover the [inaudible] landscape for Robinson.
Question, second, any further discussion, questions? Call of favor.
I'm going to put that to be an accurate, he does. They will be comparing apples to apples, or vice versa.
The design is not. Question. All requests, comments? Call of favor, do you want to say aye?
Aye.
Question for the Northern Forest Service. Mr. Benjamin James, welcome.
Chairman, as he's coming up, BJ and I have met on this a couple times, with the budget request we want for Northern Forest Service fiscal year 17, 18, they just requested $16,000 from the county for a first response tactic. Well, I think the current vehicle we're using is 20 years old, has over 100,000 miles, and is, of course, getting outdated. This is a conversation we had last year. However, that request was contingent upon the state's budget passing. As the state budget has passed, the money was approved in the state budget to provide the matching funds at 60% for this vehicle, and the county's 40% portion would equate to $16,000. The state, again, with their approval of their budget, approved the remaining 60% of the [inaudible]. Mr. Anderson, do you have anything else to add?
That's it. Other than next week, next Friday is the day that we have to have a hard and fast yes or no, if the county wants to fight it, because that's the day that they will.
No, it was not, because we did not know at the time that the state budget would fund for the remaining 60% of the [inaudible].
They did not fund it to you.
No, they did not. So that was it.
Who is the little budget person? If we could, if we could.
Just to add to that, they have been very, North Carolina Forest Service has been very prude with county money. In fiscal year 15, they actually underspent their budget by $4,600, and that money goes directly back into our fund balance a year in. In fiscal year 16, they underspent the budget by $8,900. In fiscal year 17, up to this point, although we haven't received the June invoice, they had underspent the budget by $8,900. So they are very distraught of the money.
BJ, do you get to keep the other truck in service?
We won't keep it in service, the county has the option to request the truck. And I have to get all the forms and stuff from my regional folks, but if there's an option that I would like to, the county would like to have the truck, I can work with whoever and try to make that happen.
Is that a bid system, or is that just?
It will be a bid system, yes. And I'm not quite sure how that works, I'll find out to get back to you.
Truck's still for you.
Yeah. This probably doesn't change [inaudible].
Possibly.
What are you going to get to make?
Make a motion. Yes, what else?
We've got $125,000 budget, you just can't [inaudible] today, of course, today, I'm going to obviously say you're [inaudible]. But yeah, we've got $125,000 budget.
You have a motion, Bill? Sixteen thousand. Sixteen thousand. Any further discussion? With the county offices, you're going to say, if you carry the freight truck?
Yes.
And then we might offer for sale, offset that cost.
That's.
Word of claim, I think, a bid situation.
Yes, it would be a bid.
A bid, we've been doing that, if you buy it, oh, you said you get it, you get it back.
Yes, they can, do a bid, boss.
Oh, so buy it back, yeah, buy it once. That'd make it [inaudible]. All in favor, six, can I say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, BJ. Discussion of possible closure of county offices on August 23rd. Mr. Chairman, first, I would like to, everybody to look at him. Pam, let me picture up one of these, she's got a moon tie and a sun drop. What's going to happen with their clip and the moon tie, and they'll turn to a sun drop? Nonetheless, wanted to bring this to the board's attention, been getting a lot of questions from both county employees as well as members of the community. I think that our neighboring counties, Cherokee County and Jackson County, have both declared the county offices to be closed on the day of the eclipse, simply, many other camps, due to the influx of people that are affected in the area. I know the sheriffs here with us tonight, and Warren, Kate with emergency management, and, you know, as far as the public safety is concerned, you know, that is a, could be an issue, depending on the amount of people that are, that are coming into the county. And I know the sheriff can speak to some of the things that he's found, and I think he spoke to the judge. Do you want to update the board on those?
First, before you make your decision next meeting, I'll bring you who's in a, I don't know this thing. Warren, if you'd like an opportunity to speak too, about what you all are doing. I mean, I don't want to go into detail exactly what we're doing, what I can tell you is that it's kind of an unknown thing, we don't really know what to expect. We're hearing all the experts saying about how many, they've been talking for nine months to a year about all the people that are coming, and so basically, it's kind of like calling the deaf guitars, playing poker hand, you know. We're going to, we're going to do, we're going to think of worst case scenario, we're going to prepare for it, have all the, our staff working, my fire department's working for that, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. I know other agencies are doing the same thing, and the simple truth is, you know, it doesn't matter what our personal opinion is about what's going to happen on that Monday. Prepare for everything. I've got the utmost confidence in what emergency management's doing. We've been through some, some danger before, before working on the grade. As far as county offices, I would, I would make a recommendation that, that you close the county offices, and allow us to utilize all of the resources that we have, have some of those people even be on call, if they need some county employees, community system, different things, and be able to call if there's an employee.
Sheriff, or the judge is still in this courtroom?
Judge, judges have to close court, there is no court that day. I talked to Judge Coward, and as, as you know, with courthouse security stuff that's going on, one of the recommendations, that they discussed a lot, is about courthouse. And on this day, they're making recommendations that we close the courthouse.
I don't know if this is what we're going to do, if we close the clerk's office, the court security clerk's office, or if this is going to happen, or if there's a state office. The judge, the, hang on, chairman. Mr. Goodwood, the judge, is there?
Mr. Chairman, let me add a little bit to what Rob has been talking about. We've actually had some releases sent out at the meeting, we had some conversation with folks to get people prepared for this. We probably didn't ever anticipate talking about this years ago, we've never done one in our career, and we'll never do another one in our career, and there's really no, there's no basis for us to find anybody else anywhere around that's ever dealt with this to get any kind of perspective on what to expect. So we've been, we've been sort of middle of the ground cautious, we anticipate traffic issues. If it comes to fruition, with these folks actually traveling, and from our perspective, we tend to believe that the occupancies are going to be as great or greater than our typical July fourth weekend. We've been asked for a lot of numbers. We have generated some numbers on what we think could be here based on the number of rentals we have, the hotel motels, campsites, Airbnbs, different formulas, Oregon Emergency Management has the best formula we've found on how to calculate that. And the numbers are more than what we've been using just about July fourth, so, we just don't know, we just don't know exactly what to expect. We are anticipating, us in particular, the demand for our services will be greater, but we're not going to have a holiday, we're going to work. We've taken a middle of the ground approach to our releases, a lot of counties will encourage businesses to close, we have not done that, particularly after it and related to business, you probably want to be open, but we also don't want to be the ones to tell about the close, if this is going to happen, traffic's going to be bad, and then it was business and nothing happened. But we don't want people to be cautious, and to be prepared for long lines, that could be, and just be prepared to wait, in case something comes up.
And I'll sign that, I need Warren to talk about this issue, because if you close county offices, how do you, what do you do about the employees, whether they pay their office or not, pay them, what about all those other people that get the opportunity to have their day off, and they're happy to work, it's fair to them? So it kind of goes back and forth, and I want you to do with that.
And we get a lot of credit sometimes from emergency services as far as us working holidays and weekends, but you have other folks too, that have direct work folks, and you have convenience center folks, and you have other essential services other than us. Sometimes we get all the attention, but, but there are, there are other services, our network folks, the people that are really essential to keeping us and the general public running through, so there are other folks that work holidays and weekends.
I think I have to say about sanitation, for the convenience centers, give us my feeling about that, I've got a feeling, actually, I feel, because we're all packing up the door, and those convenience centers aren't open, or they're not a [inaudible], or they need, and they come in on Tuesday morning, this will be stacked high.
One of the conversations, and I certainly don't want to speak for Chris Stoll, nor am I going to do with length with Chris sometimes, but Chris and I have already had some conversations about what to expect, so he talked to us. One of his concerns is making sure that the cans are empty Monday mornings, they're usually over the weekend, they don't haul stuff out of the convenience center, if they wait for... wait, they don't have anywhere to take it on Monday. The landfill's not open on Sunday, so they don't haul on Monday. So he was going to talk to Derek and see what he could work out, to perhaps empty those early on, on Sunday, so that there, there's room to put stuff on Monday to deal with, with the very concerns you have. So Chris is already, he's got some thoughts in back of his mind, and he's working out a plan to find a way to that.
So the convenience center, will be open?
I, I can't speak for Chris, but I, I don't know if he's made any conversation with the...
I think Chris is still, I talked to him today, and he is still trying to work that out. I think that he is considering dumping early to make some land for any trash disposal.
Will it be open?
The convenience centers, of course, may end up, of course, later.
What does it cost to shut down a week? What would it cost to stay in? He's only just given a day off. Just waiting out a day.
Jackson County counted it as a holiday, so we would be the regular, if that's the route we wanted to go, we would just amend our holiday schedule. It was adopted on, for 2017. We adopted on November 2016, amend that, and make the eclipse day a holiday. And it was just counted as a...
And take it as a day off? Or there's no extra days?
No.
Would you be paying people that work for the county that actually got called in for, would you murder them? For example, having, you know, having IT problems that day, but you need your IT, you need your IT. Well, if there's problems, it's pretty likely.
I think that's what we'll sit down, I think if that's the route we choose to go, we'll definitely, we'll sit down together and determine the essential personnel that needs to be on call or available to, to work alongside our emergency services and sheriff's department if needed.
And if we deem it a holiday, if the MS and sheriff's department are working on the holiday, maybe we got holiday pull-up pay plus the actual hours that they work if we declare it a holiday.
I can tell you that our staffing will be double that day compared to normal, if not more, and I think probably is that much or more.
You know, come to work, everybody use their precautions and bestest, and I know that there's a lot of places that are still working on that. The towns, the towns working, I think the town of Highland is still on. They're taking this down to either, either the chair. So...
I think marketplace is gonna be an issue too, and it's been cleaned up up there. People coming in, so they're going to try maybe, maybe here in the tail. It's been hooked up, one o'clock to six o'clock. My dear Black Kids, I'm gonna start placing that stuff. Or the whole part tomorrow.
I'm glad they don't have to.
We get this one wrong, we don't have to work. Nobody remembers.
I'm not sure I still know about the convenience center, because I seem to be sure here, and I think in Nana Hala, I can have a talk with people who ask questions and stuff. I can see when those people leave there, they're twice, they're gonna go somewhere. And we have convenience centers, I'd like to thank a lot of those who go in there, now it'll be on the side of the road, it'll be, it'll be close to the convenience center. I'm a place that's always moving times from two.
I think Mr. Schill brings up a bad point. And irregardless of what estimates you're listening to, I think it's fair to say that there's been moving the people here than what we were narrating for Chris to handle. And if everything goes absolutely smooth as can be, there's still gonna be more bumps and fractures to deal with if you cover a sheer amount of people. And I think, you know, any, when you take any major opinion, you know, all the viral responsibility, and I think there's a lot of responsibility to provide essential services. So I think, I think this is what's gonna be required to be, you know, should I always have to be here, but when you rent spots and things, they're $50 a night, you got waiting, it's like it's players assuming that you're gonna have more people here. In the airport, already have new bunch coming in, new high hands, which should never happen before, I think you'd assume that you're gonna have more people. So, so just because there's more people, doesn't mean anything bad's gonna happen, no, probably. But I think that...
I'm glad it's not...
You only have to use it one time in your career. So I think, I think that we should, we should be hard and planning, and I'm very confident that we've done that. But I think, you know, that we need to have a realization that there's gonna be a lot of people in town. And, and being personally, in my business, you know, I've done consider that, and, you know, my people are trying to move around and do social support and things of that nature, we're not gonna be affected that day. We're gonna be on call. Everybody I've got, we're on call that day, but we're not before, I'm pretty glad that you know, you're very productive, what we try out, but we still have some essential folks that are there.
What a way to have a snow day, Chris. Is it a holiday, you believe, is it?
No, it's not a holiday.
What's snow day?
A snow day would just be to, everybody would get paid, but you don't have like the emergency services, like the time and a half plus the day, like they would on a holiday. Basically, that's the main difference. Although the county offices are closed, we'll be compensated with them, because we made a decision to close the office. That wasn't their decision, so they don't have to leave vacation time or sick leave. And the essential services still work and still operate, they're making folks on call to administrate, emergency services personnel, sometimes we have people at the landfill. And it's straight pay, it's just like they're working, they're making the pay. You know, it doesn't kick it up into that volume, or the time and a half and the, I don't know that much.
So if I understand that right, basically, if you're in a position, or if you're in a, a job that is classified as non-essential, then you get the day off with pay?
Yes, it's just like a snow day.
And if you're already one of those essential positions and you got to work, then you get paid if you keep working.
You get paid, yes, you still get paid.
Which a lot of the boys have issues with that because we stayed home and tried to do it.
Yeah.
But we understand that, and we don't, honest to goodness, I think I would speak to Warren too, I've never heard my officers or any of my boys complain about that, but I've never had. Be honest with you. I just, I know what their responsibilities are, and I know it's important, and come in.
I think the reality of it is, most of our employees recognize that this is gonna be something that they're probably not gonna get off to and sit again. So you're gonna lose a portion of that, you know, you know, and I'm gonna be as ill as any, and I'm talking about a lot, and I'm gonna run outside for two hours before after and see if it's starting to get, you know, I'll wait up. So I think, you know, we're, it's a productivity factor, not being quite as bad as a courthouse.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with me and the county manager, the county manager, at the end of the day, I mean, that he worked for both, it's a place of better, it's a place to be there. If the holiday deal don't break for both, I think, I think that makes a good point. These people are out there working, so I think you can do it like a snow day. But I don't think... Good view on how old our employees...
I feel saying back to the budgetary issue, that he's bringing in everybody, we're gonna be over budgeted.
No, my entire department...
We're gonna be over budgeted anyway, so...
Yeah, if he's bringing in every...
It's one of the budget concerns down the road anyway, so...
See, ours are a little bit different, Paul, because ours are nine a.m. day. And so basically, that weekend from Friday to Monday, our entire department, every employee that I have employed at Sheriff's Office, either days or nights, it's all four.
If you talk to some of the other counties we have, they're all, they're all struggling with the same thing, they don't know either. Transplanting County, Cherokee County, Jackson County, they're all, nobody knows, so, but add link to the stretch, but that's really the county manager's fault.
And they were, but now, the holiday thing has to be adopted and approved by the board, therefore it would have to be amended, that would have to be amended and approved by the board, so that's the very...
My regulations are, I'm still aware of what I, it's a piece.
Now, the holiday pay, really, I mean, for Sheriff and EMS, because that's regular pay, and we're not gonna work, you know, I mean, we're gonna make holiday, probably do regularly, that'd be a little bit more tax.
It's not wrong, but it's always holiday pay.
Well, everybody can get paid on holiday, but my point is, you're not gonna get...
You're not getting double pay.
You're not getting double pay, except for Sheriff and EMS.
A hundred percent.
Obviously, I mean, that's...
Maybe they have their own opinion on it too.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me give you another option. And again, it doesn't matter, we're in short holidays, so we, our folks do what they have to do, but if the money's an issue for us, if we just tell our folks to take eight hours off some other day, I don't have an issue with that either. If it's the money. We still have to pay them, because if I, they take off, I have to backfill them some more, so there is a cost, but, but if that's easier on you, happy lectures, then I'm okay with that.
Just don't take our Christmas holiday.
That's happened before, they gave us a holiday for something else, they took one of our days for Christmas, so I'm just, I don't want to be there.
2011.
Yeah, I know, I just don't want that to happen.
We just declared a holiday, yeah, we just declared a holiday, and if they work that day, they get holiday pay plus hour and a half, that's the plan that separates them from us. They can't let payroll.
You couldn't come in there early, send an hour later, and just your eight hours in that way? You know, it's so complicated.
Let me take, please.
Holidays, the...
I'd recommend, I'd recommend the board consider declaring August 23rd, 2017, a holiday, meaning, meaning our current holiday schedule.
Follow the county manager's recommendation, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to the board, recommend, declare an eclipse day a holiday. So it's getting more.
I did the same on my business, so...
I'm the same thing, we're going, we're gonna do it. Now, who's going to decide the essential services? I mean, we're all those people coming to make county, we're shut down. That's the county manager's job.
And I will also tell you that our emergency operations center will be open on a limited date, so, Mr. Chairman, you got a chair there that you're looking at.
Appreciate y'all. All right, the motion is second in favor?
Aye.
Was there a decision made about the courthouse? And what's the penalty?
It's a holiday. It's a holiday.
Okay.
I do think somebody from here needs to speak to the clerk's office, determine what they say, what you're on, is planning to do with the clerk's office. I'm not being pretty in this conversation, but we don't have the ability to shut that office.
No, they, I know that even if we declare early leave for snow, they might sometimes leave an hour or two after us or before, but we let the county. So it's definitely a difference. But you can...
It would be helpful if the press could pick this up and let people know, for example, you're gonna have...
I don't get an office. I pay a holiday for me.
You gotta take pictures of it, Chris. I mean, for example, you could have real estate offices count on closing purchases to sell that day, closing schedules that day.
The lawyer gonna work that day, they're not, they're not gonna have...
The lawyer ain't gonna, they get holiday every day, they ain't...
Mr. Manager, I would, I would volunteer to get up with Big Perry first thing in the morning, have a discussion with him, and contact you at a meeting and set up a meeting for me and him to come see to you and start that discussion. So now, and then maybe this week, try, try to have you on solid.
All right, set out, resolution regarding interest on board. Jim, as you know, approximately a year ago, animal controls in Mankin County was shifted from an animal control director, John Brooks, into the health department. At that time, the animal control ordinance has the basic amendments made with so as to reflect the change to the health department. At the time, those amendments were presented to you, told you that only basic changes were made, but there would be some additional changes to come. In the process of working on those amendments within the health department, it has been discovered that our dangerous dog, or potentially dangerous dog resolution needs some adjustments given that change. I had prepared a resolution which would accomplish those changes, and present those changes to you and that resolution to the recommendations. I guess I'm the dangerous dog person, so I'll make a motion. I'm not making a motion to the intention of dangerous dogs, a resolution issue. We approve this, we're taking...
May I make a second?
Second.
Second motion, Bill? The discussion, our agenda, everything, filters to hit. All in favor, should I say aye?
Aye.
Next is consent agenda. Items are normally approved and enacted in one motion, but items, the chairman of the city, the mayor, they have to do this stuff. The law will maintain a motion, Mr. President.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve that.
Motion is second, should we all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, does any of that take some appointments?
Uh, yes, although the appointments, we have, the health board has three, the community funding board has two, and the planning board has one.
All right, Mr. President.
And, yes, and I know all those are composed, we not received any applications, and the, we ordered, Jim Butler, he spoke with me today, and he is, he does have a position that is interested in serving, so we're throwing out an application.
So no action?
No action.
Need for closed session on the winner?
No, sir.
You have a motion to adjutant?
So move it, can I make a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize, yesterday I celebrated my seventy-second birthday, and the first thing I did was say the county commissioner's meeting at seven, so I came an hour late. Could I have thirty seconds for public session?
We have a motion forward to adjutant, can I hold to our next meeting?
No, it's a very urgent one.
Well, thank each fellow from Nana Hala, try to have a meeting over there.
Yeah, thanks, that, that is, I'll thank y'all for coming to the evening, that's right.
And about the, do y'all know the fella who, who got people in Nana Hala, they want a second buoy after it legs in? I've been notified about that, I've been, and Derek, I think, is a visitor. No?
Steve Wopps.
Steve Wopps. I got three calls.
You worked from China down to the pole, Chris, Steve Wopps.
No, no, it ain't the name, like, that's...
Daniel.
Don Gordon.
No.
Steve.
Thank you.
Steve.
Jim, Paul, they said that they're still having a weight problem there, late in, it's killing our little jet ski, doing night o. I don't know who has the charge to the fru...
Have to go back to the...
Have to go back to the wildlife.
They went to the wildlife and gone to scoop the buoy on out into the water.
Because they wait for the wildland, gone to spin the buoy on out into the water, but it gets soft, but they must solve nothing to get them out.
Could be enforcement issue.
Somebody's gonna be over there, though. With a second buoy here.
I think that they've had it approved to have another buoy out.
Yeah, we put a brand new one out there.
Took the old one out.
Well, what we did is, we moved it out.
Moved it out.
Yeah, they want a second buoy with that, in y'all's opinion, is that gonna help anything? They get two night-o's around here?
Probably just good enough.
You don't need a second one out there.
I'm fortunate to marry in.
Anybody can see.
I'm a good people's league.
There, still there.
That's, don't let, the problem is enforcement. No one can, was that wildland?
Gotta be there.
I'll talk, I'll talk to Steve then.
I'm sorry, I think, I thought I had something.
We got a problem with Paul. I'm like, I can see, I mean, if they don't go on the board.
Right, a ticket.
Thank y'all.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to. I'd like to.
This is self-explanatory, but I know that we are very adverse to the county government here, and my main thrust is, Derek, my main thrust is being to the mainspring conservation, and that's what I'm hoping to achieve, but this is a very significant view. Point, my memo says both for us and for the, I would hate to lose it, the three houses are built right next to that barn, and if there's some way you can talk to the owner, when I looked at the land records, I don't know who it is, because his signature is incyclical, but if you could encourage the landowner to either donate the land, or have a, some sort of accession, or maybe a promise, never build there.
Oh, okay. I guess Jim, there's a Marie Roper, called Roper.
No, same here. You see it?
It's got a picture on that.
One view is from the looking east, and the other is looking west.
Well, that's where the building has down low, Russ?
Exactly.
Right on 28th, and this Roper, and called Roper, Marie Roper, they're a little farm out in Jim, out of all of that.
Up until May, it didn't seem to be a problem. They'd only built one house, and then maybe a second, and all of a sudden, during June, they've got boom, 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 three.
There's a sale, now there's a sale, well, that's, that's probably good.
But right along the barn, there are lots, four, five, and six. And that's what, if you buy them, you don't, if you don't buy them, you don't have a way to, you don't have.
I think Jim, I believe you do.
And he's very reasonable, Chris.
Do I do?
Well, yes, but he won't listen to me. He'll listen. I think the only, the only thing he can do there is run battle, which would never hold us.
Thank you, Ralph. Motion for the return, make sure the bill in a second.
Which paper?
That's second, I'll bear. All right. Thank you, Joe. Pleasure to serve the body, all.
I think you can serve easier on.
You gotta take it out, I do.
Thank you.
The world may not have a little money later.